I would like to call to order this meeting of the Champlain Valley Union High School School Directors Regular Meeting, April 9th, 2014, 7:05. So, let's see, moving right on, we are not going to have an executive session today, so we'll move right on to Section 3, Adjustments to the Agenda. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, I have one. I'd like to add 6.4 Retreat Topics to the Agenda.
I just have one comment, it can be 20 or whatever.
Go for it.
A reminder, a announcement maybe for some folks. This year's CBU graduating class is the 50th, and so we will have graduation on Friday, June 13th. It's at CBU, at UVM, and we're organizing for all past administrators, faculty, staff to maybe walk in together ahead of our graduates. We're starting to get the word out, and an article was done by Chris O'Donnell, one of our faculty members here. Susan helped get it to all the local newspapers. I gave it to Terry Hollenbach today from the Free Press. She's gonna do some publicity with it, some article, something closer to graduation. We're gonna use social media to get the word out for folks to attend. It should be a very exciting and neat event. And then, in the fall, something that's not been planned totally yet to acknowledge that, so that it's here on campus, because this building is so significant.
It was a really great article, I think you're all gonna enjoy it. In fact, maybe we can just send it out to everybody on the board, because it was a nice article.
Did most of the Observer decide to publish it?
Honestly, it's only been sent to the record, they're the ones that needed it the earliest. It will all be coming out on the same day, but it hasn't been distributed yet to the other ones, so.
Are you volunteering to him?
I'd be happy to.
I would hope, I mean, I know that there's different community opinions on what gets in newspapers, but this is really a big accomplishment. I mean, CBU has grown, and we've got three generations. We don't think there's a fourth generation here yet, but there's a lot of community people that have stayed on and have roots to CBU, so if we could have all the community papers do it, that would be super.
David, when I send it to the Observer, I'll copy you on it, so you can put your little whole plug in there as well. Okay, are there any other communications from the audience? Nobody's here? Okay.
He's here to take notes.
No communication, do you want to share anything?
He's representing our union.
I guess I just wanted to mention that Kim and Polly and I went to the BSBA New Member Training last Thursday, and it was the first time I'd gone to one, and it was really interesting. I think we all got something different out of it. We're kind of at various stages in our participation on school boards, but it was a case study approach, and I found it really interesting. I don't know if anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to come to you.
The big message, if you have a question, go to the chair. Okay, moving on to Section 5, we have a presentation tonight, Implications of SPL on Future Systems.
Mm-hmm. Well, okay, so I'm gonna pass something out, and then I'm gonna share some information. Okay. So, the original intent was to have Patty Thomaschott join me, who is Director of Guidance, and has an awful lot to do with the work we've been doing around the things that we're gonna speak about tonight. She was gonna be my resident expert relative to the work they've done, the research they've done, particularly with higher ed. However, there is an issue that was brought to my attention just a few minutes ago, and I knew that either she or I needed to deal with it immediately, so I'm having her deal with it right now. So, I'm soloing, which means a number of things. The PowerPoint we're gonna show you is with her. Some of the information I'm gonna provide for you is with her, but I'm gonna do my best, so.
Did you go back, Jeff, and did we reorder the?
I think I know enough about what we're doing. Yes, I would like to be more prepared, but this happens often. A phone rings at quarter of seven, you know, probably not gonna be good. So, the purpose of tonight was that, you know, over the past two or three years that I've been involved, you've heard us talk to you a lot about what we're doing with standards. Eventually, we knew that it was gonna have to impact some structures, some systems, within the school, for us to be able to move forward and continue to move forward. And we're starting to reach that point now, where we have to look at things like how we communicate progress to students and families, meaning primarily report cards, transcripts, and progress reports. And so tonight, the purpose was to share some of the conversations we're having and some of the decisions that we're considering relative to how to make certain shifts to our systems that will enhance our ability to deliver standard-based learning, okay? And there's a couple of essential questions. The first one is, what changes are necessary to make standards-based learning a more effective or to improve the implementation of it? The second one is, how do we do that in a way that still allows us to communicate student achievement to higher education? Because the primary product that students are looking for here is that transcript, okay? So, we have to, so we did a lot of research, and this is where Patty comes in. They did an awful lot of research, they visited colleges, they talked to a lot of colleges' admissions people. We belong to Aleve Innovative Schools, and we've been to several conferences. I was there a couple of weeks ago, hearing from schools that are doing proficiency-based education. And the following things we've learned about the higher ed piece, and that is, colleges will accept different-looking report cards or transcripts, as long as you can explain them and define what they mean. And so, it would mean altering our school profile a little bit, being able to explain to admissions people, what do these indicators mean now, and how do we interpret them? Colleges are now experiencing more and more and more standards-based systems, and also for years, they've had school choice, students applying, and using a very different set of criteria. And so, they're really becoming pretty accustomed to getting something that looks outside of the cookie cutter transcript that they've become accustomed to in past years. So, what we've started doing is, as we've done the work here, we've heard a few refrains that have really impeded our progress. And one of those refrains is the idea of removing habits from that grade, okay? And so, that's been, that's been one of the things that's been embedded in our work. How do we address that? Because we would like to convert everybody, but it takes a long time, and that is the thing that's blocking a lot of us, okay? And there's some sound reasons for it. So, that's one of the first things we had to consider. And then the other thing is-
Can you just give me an example of what you mean by that?
Sure. So, the traditional system, traditional system, you are awarded points, and I'm gonna back up. I'm gonna give you a metaphor that the instructional coaches came up with, and it really helps me explain standards-based learning to other people. And that is, the shift goes from grades being compensation to being communication. And so, in a traditional system, teachers have been like students' bankers. You award points for certain things, you subtract points for certain things, for getting work in late, for not being on time, for not participating in class, for being the quiet kid in the corner, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, if grades are just communication, what we do is this, we say, and I've shown you learning targets, and you've got a few in front of you now. Let's say that you are trying to get to a particular hotel, Revere, in Boston, okay? That is the learning target. That stays the same for everybody. But, people are starting all different places. There will be people starting in the Cape and in Boston, and there'll be people in Vermont and Texas, and so for some, it's gonna take longer. For some, the route's gonna be very, very different. For some, there's gonna be roadblocks, and they're gonna have to detour. And so, what we are now as teachers, we are the GPS. We tell them how to get there. And we keep changing the route when they need an accommodation, or a retake, or reteaching. And so, and the grade, if it's communication, that's the blue dot that says you are here. And so, if communication truly is about achievement, what you know, understand, and can do, it should be, it should take out habits. It should take out being prepared for class, being on time, working hard, that kind of stuff. That's still essential, and that's why we're trying to address this and some of those changes that I'm gonna share with you today.
So, how often is that happening nowadays? Like, is that becoming more common to take out the habits of the, in the Aleve Innovative Schools? Is that pretty standard practice there?
Yes, it is. It is. What we're gonna share with you is actually something that a lot of the schools we've seen have not attempted, but those we've shared it with like the idea. So, what I'm gonna do now is just kinda show you the three levels of reporting that we want to consider, and then I'll talk to you about where we are with that. So, the first page I've already shown you before. So, there's the unit report. The unit report, rather, is where the standards exist. So, there are learning targets specific to standards, as you can see. This is an actual report from one of my advisors, and habits is removed. You'll notice they report on habits. That does not factor into that grade, okay? And so now, those are the standards, those are the, that is the language, rather, that's connected to the standard. And that allows teachers to be very specific and intentional about how they differentiate and how they create their instruction. And I've shown you this before. So, that's the first level, and that is really, right now, we're talking about in terms of next steps. That's the standards-based reporting that we want to get all students to experience, okay? Then, you look at the report card. So, the report card comes out at this point every nine weeks, and you see an example of a report card on the backside. And this should look familiar to any of you parents.
It came out today.
It came out, I think, today? Yes.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yes. And we've made a shift for the freshmen, because they're the ones using these targets. And here's the big shift here, is now we are reporting achievement and habits separately, okay? So, when we, for so long, were having these debates with teachers about removing habits from the grade, when I was able to say to them, yeah, but what if you can give a grade for each, makes the argument move in many respects. And so, what you see now is a semester, well, actually, a third quarter as well, but at the semester, core teachers, so English, history, math, math teacher, I think for this group was out, so she didn't do it, you'll see a quarter grade, and you'll see the habits of learning, score one to four. And what we are trying to do, excuse my phone, but things are still happening apparently, so what we're working on is having the ability by the beginning of next school year for all teachers to report on both on the report card. The likelihood, and we haven't had our discussion with the faculty yet, the likelihood is, we will ask people to commit to a certain level of SPL, so maybe not, oops, not everyone will be prepared to separate that. My own sense is, I think a lot of people will welcome this opportunity to do that, okay? Okay, then, what you're looking at on the last two pages, the first one, this is a typical transcript of a senior, okay? So, if you look at this, you'll see all the courses, 9 through 11, and then 12th grade, it's separated out into all the quarters, because 12th grade is still going up. But, once he or she finishes 12th grade, all of those grades would be in a single column. So, that final transcript would have all those grades in that single column, okay? Then if you look over to the academic standing, it gives a GPA. And then there would be other information, error, challenge, et cetera, if necessary. What we are proposing doing as a first step, if you look on the backside, is to make a relatively slight change. And that is, now the column would be changed from final average to final academic achievement. So, that will be specifically the grades you earned in the classes that reflect what you know, understand, and can do. And each course will give a final habits of learnings. And colleges have told us this would be really useful information to have, and I'm used to it. I know the kid is in terms of achievement, he knows, understands, and can do, and I know how hard a worker he or she is. And so, I don't have to discern how much of that is embedded into the grade. Also notice under academic standing, we would add, so you would have an achievement, GPA, and a habits, GPA.
So, how do you get from the progress report, you know, one to four ranking, to the, would you still use the A, B, C, D?
Yes, currently, and we've studied, a lot of other schools have done this, a true proficiency-based report card would probably not have a single letter grade. It would have the indicators, and then a score for the indicators. There's virtually no high school that's gone there yet, you know? At this point, what we are doing is, we're still giving families and students what they're used to getting, which is a letter grade, but now, we are A, providing the information on how we got that letter grade, B, separating habits from it, and C, hopefully, making the grade more accurate. Yes?
So, I'm thinking that there needs to be a legend of some sort that shows those values in the, because I was even looking at the GPA. The GPA is based on changing a B to a three and changing a, right? So, some sort of consistency, so they understand what those numbers are.
Yes, yeah, I agree, and that's, we've talked about that as well.
It's not quite the same, because they're doing them on a three-point scale?
Right, and we've talked about that, and-
Or a four-point scale.
And some, we've looked, a lot of standards-based transcripts, and there are also some that on the backside of the transcript would have the actual standards that each discipline deals with, and that's something that we could eventually build into this as well. Right now, what we're trying to do is make, pave that road a little smoother for our faculty and for our families, they'll understand, the first thing we're really asking you to understand is the relationship between habits and achievement, and that allows us to then do some of the standards work. So, we're not asking people to jump straight to a true standards-based transcript at this point, but it is connected to standards, and we will try to show the linkage.
Yeah. So, this says it's a habits of learning GPA. Does that mean it's just your actions in class? It doesn't have anything to do with your learning? Or is it the number grade that you get for learning throughout the class?
Well, I would split, I would try to avoid the word "learning," because I think learning encompasses both. So, think of it this way, the achievement grade is what you know, understand, and can do. That's what you've demonstrated. Your habits are your work ethic, your participation rate, your meeting all deadlines, those types of things.
So, that GPA just represents those characteristics?
Right. And we actually have a rubric that would be connected to that to show what those indicators are.
So, Jeff?
Jeff? How are these various categories come up? 2.1 Writing Purpose, I can establish where, did the teachers create these, or are they-
No, these are, right now, currently, these are connected to all ESLs. So, these are all ESLs. And we've done a lot of work over the last two years of then cross-referencing them with Common Core, and so, we've got a document where the teacher says, I wanna do something for Writing Purpose 2.1, they click on it, boom, there are all the Common Core standards that are aligned with that. They can choose the language from that to help them make a target.
Okay, where, this is on the CBU?
This is on the CBU Learn site. We haven't done a good enough job of embedding that in our practice yet, but it's one of the things that we're working on.
Jeff?
Yeah?
With the habits of learning, someone could look at a high, have a high GPA because they're really devoted, motivated, their learning gap could have a lower GPA on the academic standard, and that would give you information?
Then that would be related to this report here, because now, this really clearly identifies the learning or the learning targets that need more work.
Yeah. In this, in this example, the academic mastery, the habits of learning are higher than that than the mastery.
Yeah, exactly. This is my advisor, and to be honest, that, you know, I've had conversations with him, said, you're plugging away here, you're working hard, so we're not, I'm not concerned so much with your work ethic, although getting to class on time could improve. So, it's a really different conversation that I'm having with him. And then, the conversation's a lot more is now about, hey, how you doing with that analysis? You know? If I give you a piece of evidence, and we'll talk about current events, and I'll say, okay, what's that mean to you? What's that mean to you? You know, draw that, draw a conclusion from that. So, there's practice with analysis. As an advisor, I couldn't have those conversations in the past, when all I saw was C, and that's all I got. Yeah, chief?
It's my turn to more up those.
Yeah, yeah. Sure.
If somebody, so, so say 2.1 Writing Purpose, I assume that there are some classes like the Core, where you might work on that all year long. So, if you have, like, improving grades, do you average them at the end of the year, or do you use the highest, the last one? Because it seems like last one means you've achieved something, right? Why does it matter what you did before?
Boy, is that a good point. Now, one I was hoping wouldn't be brought up yet.
Sorry.
Here's the dilemma I see, and it is that, for these reports here, we have convinced a lot of teachers that averaging is, and I've told you this, averaging is not, is not a great strategy, because if you can do it in November, but you couldn't do it in, I'm sorry, if you can do it April, but you couldn't do it in November, why are we still counting what you were doing in November? And so, we use something called Power Law, which is an algorithm that looks at the most recent and trends, and it's pretty representative, which is great. The problem is, we haven't now figured out that on that transcript, should the things you did as a freshman count as much as you did as a senior? And talk it out of both sides of our mouths a little bit to say that when you create a grade here, it can't be average, you know? It's gotta be looking at trends and most recent. But in the transcript, what do we do? What do we do with those grades from freshman to sophomore year? I'm not sure yet. And I think that eventually, the more we have these discussions, and the more we do this in our classroom, the more it'll drive the conversation about, well, what do we want the, how accurate do we want the transcript to be? If we are indeed saying that this makes our grades more accurate.
Well, it's just also fair. I mean, if you're asking somebody, did they achieve the standard, then they ought to be, I achieved the standard or I didn't, so.
Yeah, but on the other hand, it would have to be a standard that is repeated grade after grade after grade.
So, what you're saying is that 2.1 should, could be harder as a senior than 2.1 as a freshman, and that is-
Yeah, the targets should change. They should become more complex. But, if it's something that's very content-specific-
Multiplication.
Yeah, maybe you only did it in freshman year, and so therefore, it should still be represented. So, a little more complicated than I'm capable of wrapping my head around, yeah.
Well, a long time ago, you and I had a conversation, Jeff, about a parent being able to access their students' workload, their homework, whatever, at a point in time. And I love the explanation that you gave me, that maybe it's okay to not know it now at the beginning and not later. And so, to me, this fits in.
Yeah, I think eventually, we would like to get to the point where we are not the ones dictating the communication, that this is a two-way communication process, that parents have access to the portal, students have access to the portal, and they can see it at any time. Right now, the difficulty with that is, we're still in the infancy of using these standards. A lot of times, we're just using the standards as practice. We're putting scores in there that we don't intend to have factor into a grade. And can you imagine varying it, and they're not understanding that, and having to, you know, remedy that on a regular basis? So, we need to get our pedagogy to a place where we feel comfortable, first of all, and then, secondly, well, that's actually, that's the answer.
When is this rolling out? Will it be for the-
So, the timeframe right now is, well, a few things. First of all, the, one of the snow days, we had an in-service where we were going to talk about this as a full faculty, so you're hearing about it before the full faculty, which makes me uncomfortable, but we will be talking to them in May about these possibilities. And right now, we have met with all of our technology people, and they are working with MMS, who's our systems provider, to be able to do the things that we just showed you. The goal is to have the report card capable of doing what you just saw for all teachers, and then, by the end of the year, having the transcript be able to reflect it for freshman next year, so that next year's freshman class would be the first one to have that transcript that you saw in front of you. Because you can't, you've got a grandfather-
You can't switch one half.
Yeah, you can't have two different systems being applied to students. And that, and we're waiting on the technology piece on the transcript as to whether we can do it or not. I don't think we've asked for a significant change, and I think we can do it.
I mean, I know that personally, I can understand that we're talking about splitting content and habits of learning. That far, I'm pretty comfortable, I think a lot of parents would be pretty comfortable. We get, start getting into whether or not you can even possibly get an A as a freshman, because the standard's too hard. That, then start messing with kids' grades, I have to say, we ought to go more slow on that.
No, I agree, and I'll tell you, the way we've addressed that is that, when you write a learning target, it should be very specific to your expectations for this particular time. So, it's the analogy, I may have given it to you before, I apologize if I have, that if the standard is to run a marathon in June, in November, you're not using a target that says can run 26.2 miles. You're probably using a target that says can run seven miles. So, the targets that are aligned to this have to be very specific to what the fair expectation is for that learner at that time.
And a good answer within the year, because eventually, then you get into, as a freshman, this is your grade, but if it's a four-year progression-
Right, right. And so, eventually, we have got to have targets that are sequential.
Do you expect any pushback from parents, or do we have a plan to roll this out from parents? Because I would imagine that some of them will be very concerned about separating it out in terms of-
I think parents are conservative grades.
I can't believe you don't have CBU 2.0 or something like that. I'm amazed.
It's, well, there's two answers there I wanna provide. First thing is, our experience with the Core this year, because they have separated it up. Not a single core teacher has given a grade this year with any habits embedded in there, okay? They've been separated up, and we have had, to my knowledge, zero pushback.
But they've been giving letter grades and the habits of learning numerical score?
Yep. What you've, yeah, what you've been seeing on the report card and in these reports here is what they've been getting all year. And the second piece of that would be as far as, you know, selling it to the public. I think our first goal is to work with our students and teachers, and I wanna be at a point where I feel as though most people who are implementing this feel confident enough to define it and defend it, and I don't think we're there yet. We've got about a third of our faculty in that spot, I think, right now. And along those lines, our instructional coaches are running a standards-based class this year for our teachers specifically, and our goal was to get at least 20 people, because we wanna use the money we raised to then bring Rick Worley, I've mentioned him many times, he's the guru of standards here, and he's coming in November, because we need at least 20. We have almost 40 already signed up.
That's great.
So, there's definitely a lot of interest on the part of our faculty, and we do feel as though this particular, by changing these structures a little bit, it'll enhance that a little bit.
I'm dying to see the kids, the teachers' habits of learning through their class. Okay, don't do that.
No comment. The final thing I'd add is, and this is not a conversation we've had in earnest yet, it's just some things we've considered, and Patty would've been able to speak to it a little bit better, but- to speak to a little bit better, but honor roll becomes a bit of an issue for a lot of people who work with standards, because if it's a process, and the grade should really come at the end of the learning, and when it really means something, and be more accurate. There is a school, I can't remember which one it is, but locally, who has gone to honor roll at the semesters only. So, right now, it's every quarter, but at the end of semester, end of the year. And we have a lot of semester courses. So we would like to start considering that as a possibility of just doing it the two times when this, when the grades are much more accurate. And just throwing the idea around, that to be on the honor roll, maybe you would have to have a certain GPA, or both of those, the habits and achievement. But again, that's, that's, that's in its infancy, that discussion as well. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Okay, moving right along, section 5.2. Lisa?
Hi.
Student council report?
Yes. So unfortunately, Alex could not make it. He is stuck in an airport, but I'm here, so I can report out for you guys. Fourth quarter started in March, and with that, the spring sport tryout has begun, and spring sports are now in full swing. I know the girls' lacrosse team just had a game yesterday, and unfortunately, the varsity team lost, but I think the JV won. In these past couple days, we've been having half-days for the faculty to read the grad challenge papers, and so that's been great for the students. Especially because yesterday was free cone day. Yeah. And then on Monday, we had the college fair with over 120 colleges in attendance, and that was a huge success. A lot of, I know, students from other schools also came to CVU to attend our college fair. Last week, the Holocaust in Human Behavior class went on a field trip, a week-long field trip to Washington DC to, and I know they just got back, and everybody had a great, really great time. So that was really interesting. And then, in between the last meeting and this meeting, the theater put on one acts, and this was right after the meeting, the weekend after. And they were student-directed one acts, four of them, and I went to go see them, and they were really, they really did a great job. And there were a lot of people involved, and it was really cool, because there were four different plays inside of one whole big show. And in student council, we've recently started working on several proposals that students in, participating in student council had. One is, that's starting next Monday, actually, is the African Library Book Drive. So a student brought this forward and wanted the students of CVU to donate a book and a buck kind of thing, to donate a book to send to a community library in Malawi. And we'll, we'll also have to fundraise to ship these books as well. And that starts next week. And then another proposal that we're working on is Happiness Week. And under this, one, another proposal that falls under this is cafeteria maintenance appreciation. I know the students, we really do appreciate them, but it's hard to always show our thanks to them. So we're still in the brainstorming process, but maybe an event to honor them. And then, a couple of students brought forward the idea of having student evaluations of teachers, maybe at the end of a class or in the, during the semester, so teachers can get feedback on how students think the class is going, and what they like, and any input. And then, the final thing was a town hall, where students who aren't in student council can come and contribute any ideas they have. We were hoping to have one student from each advisory in the school come and represent their advisory, so just in case that somebody there wanted to share something, they could bring it forward to the student council. Great, got it.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. 5.3, principals report?
Yeah, I'll make mine brief, because I covered several of the bullets already. But this is hiring season, so we are inundated right now with interviews and the interview process for several positions that are listed there. And I wanted to add a couple of accolades that are in this as well, for some students. Speech and Debate had a very good run, and is still on the run. So two teams, one is Abby Keim and Alec Collins, and the other one is Owen Hudson and Kyle Gale. And they both finished first in the Northeast Regional, with a lot of schools represented from Pennsylvania, New York, et cetera, and are now moving on to Nationals, which is a great accomplishment. Olivia Hearn won a very prestigious award and was brought to the State House for the Comcast Leadership Award. And one of our teachers, Mike Burris, has been named the Project Ignite teacher. Much of what you saw, those who were here for the CSSU presentation on technology, he's one of those guys that goes well beyond the, the drill and kill stuff that they were talking about. He, he has really embedded technology into the classroom in a way that makes a lot of us want to learn from him.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, and the stuff about in-service, we'll talk about when we get to calendar.
Okay, moving on to 5.4, CSSU debrief. Jean, would you like to take that one?
I think, well, CSSU board was pretty focused on the change to, special educators are now part of the CSSU, they're employees of CSSU. So we're struggling, I'd say, a little bit with going through a learning process on how to manage special educators in local schools at the CSSU level. So we're kind of working through that whole process, because clearly, local boards have, and local administrations are the ones who are directly impacted by those, that staff. So we're talking our way through that, and we moved a couple of decisions. Tonight, we just authorized the local boards to make, make the decision for next year, because we really haven't got a good process to replace that yet. So a lot of discussion around that. We had a, I'm sorry, Paulie wasn't here, because the food, remember we had a Food Services Committee? Those of you who remember, we had a Food Services Committee at the CSSU Board. And they kind of, and open interpretations, I've heard the same thing on this, but I would say that they came to a point where they, they had a lot of, you know, we have very good food service programs all around the district. While there are models that would centralize food service in, at the CSSU level, the committee did not come to a decision to recommend or not recommend that. So the CSSU Board at the retreat will have another discussion about, do we just want to accept that as the output of the committee, which is, there's no compelling reason, or do we want to take it further? There was actually no one from the committee there, so Paul Emerson wrote something up. There was no one there, so we couldn't really have a good dialogue about it. So I assume we will, we will at least have a little more dialogue. Anything else, anybody else?
I guess just the tech audit that has come out, and there was a presentation on that. Did all of you make that? So that was?
It was very, it was very interesting. Didn't get to get it through.
Really excellent presentation.
So there was?
I think the takeaway for me was that there's kind of a lack of a common vision at the SU level, and I, it sounds like that will be the work that will start to take place.
Yeah, it came about because at one point, this central office was looking to hire, add a position to be the coordinator of, it's really, it's not, we have, we have a network administrator, kind of that, you know, hardware and networking. We don't have a curriculum-focused IT person. And the CSSU Board during the budget this year and a half ago was a little reluctant to add a position, a whole other position there. So the compromise position was that we hired some consultant to do an audit for us. And so I can't, I haven't even absorbed everything. They definitely found that there are huge inconsistencies between the schools and implementation. There's a, they did 300, they will, they put out like 400 surveys and got 300 back, and 70 interviews, or it was a huge number, very comprehensive assessment. And it seems like there's no, as Susan said, there's no, the faculty does not feel there's a common understanding of the policy or the goals. And those, I was a little confused, because at some point, the faculty was saying, "We have a lot of support." On the other hand, they were saying, "We, we don't really have enough support to actually make changes in our classroom." So it's just a lot of data, it's a lot of things to go through and understand. Clearly, it's a target-rich environment. My, my big concern is, we have an awful lot on people's plates right now.
I think, I think it's only fair to balance that it was, at the same time, they're saying, "We need leadership." They also talked about that actually, we're doing extremely well as a supervisor and union, that there's a lot of technology available, but not, not exactly as the same amount in each one of the feeder schools, the K-38 schools. So there's inconsistency there. So it, it, it both pointed out some areas, I think, that we can improve things, but also applauded us for doing a lot of things very well. So it was, and the background information, you probably can get online for CSSU, when, the role of technology to transform education was the first, a lot of pages of the, of the report is really exceptionally low. But I have rarely read something that made such a strong case for needing to do things differently. So if you're interested in it, you should check that out. You can borrow my coffee for 50 cents for the reason. I think it must be, because it's a, it's a CSSU package, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for adding that, because that was really true. They kept making a huge point about that, is we have phenomenal staff, you know, the IT folks that are working for all the schools are super qualified.
She said they were exceptional.
Exceptional, and that teachers did feel well supported, you're right, in some ways. But then, actually implementing the technology for the learning purposes that you were just talking about, that seemed to be the area where we need a little more attention. So, any other thoughts, questions?
Need for more professional development.
In that area, in technology area?
Well, but more, you know, I, I've been active in South Burlington, where every kid has his own laptop, and how the teachers, you know, the various software packages that are available for the kids to use. Are the teachers in CSSU aware of the software that they can use in their classroom for communicating with the students, for, you know, posting assignments, for posting resources, and so on, or just giving access to resources? And, you know, okay, I'm teaching a science course on this, you know, what, what videos are available, what reading is available, what, you know, talking heads, just, I mean, just a huge amount of sort of resources that are available. How do they find them, and what are they?
Well, I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation that we're just getting into, so. Okay, then moving on, section 5.5. Do we have any committee reports today?
Well, I guess, well, the negotiation, I guess someone, CSSU negotiations, it's just, we're, we're going to fact-finding, so that should be known. And the mediation didn't produce what we hoped for, a signed contract, so we're moving on.
Okay. So we'll know something definitive next month? Is it likely?
I estimate, it sounds like the association and the administration agreed on a fact-finder. Who knows how long that takes? That, because it seems like that's probably five weeks in figuring that out. So now there's a question of scheduling. And so I said, is there a date scheduled? And the answer was, no, not yet.
Well, I got the impression that they were, if they have a name, I have the impression that, that they were hoping to get it assigned and back before the school year.
Well, that was the original call.
Well, that's what Simi said today.
Yeah, I, I think, once, once this meeting is held, this fact-finding report is held, the fact-finder has 30 days to issue a report. We all get to read it, but it's confidential for the first 10 days, and then after that, it's, it's a public document. And the hopeful, the hopeful part is that, that fact-finder identifies a position that's agreeable to both parties before the end of the year. So teachers at the end of the year know that they still have a job, but don't have a job.
Okay. All right, then, moving on to section six, Discussion Matters, 6.1, Administration Recommendation to Reconfigure Special Education Staffing.
So yeah, Megan and I are going to talk to you a little bit. Megan is going to give you some background about the process we followed that led to this decision, and then I'll talk a little bit about the impact, potential impact it could have on staff.
So there's kind of two parallel bodies of work that, that have kind of come to this decision. The first is more of the bigger, broader work, some of which we talked about at the SU meeting, in terms of, not just at the SU level, but the field of intervention in general, is really looking at practices that accelerate growth. And one of the key things that, that we understand about what works is having the most expert teachers providing services for our most tangled students. And the work of TILT that we shared is really about studying our service delivery models, and how do we get to this point? One of the things that's also kind of important to this, to, to understanding in terms of the framework part of this is, two, at least two other schools in our SU are undergoing, have undergone or are right this moment undergoing the same kind of service delivery model analysis. Williston, last year, two years ago actually, implementation this year, had a similar proposal to reduce actually a significant number of paraprofessionals and added four professional staff to their, to their school system. Partial, they're actually did not fully net out the way that this proposal does, so they actually, the, the board approved additional funds to switch to the service delivery model. That's been quite successful. What that's done in Williston has decreased the number of classroom teachers that a special educator is assigned to, and significantly increases the ability to provide really expert intervention. And Shelburne is currently having the same conversation this evening with a similar proposal. So that's kind of the broad overview. And the more CVU-specific overview is, this is really the culmination of two to three years' worth of work on Anna and her department's part and the leadership team around analyzing, analyzing their service delivery model. Do they have enough people to provide really good services to the kids in the system? And that culminated this year with bringing in an outside consultant to do a, an audit of the special ed program, to look at the kinds of services we can provide, where we're challenged to provide services. And it's really that report in combination with all of the other conversations that have landed at, this is really the best proposal at this point, to be able to deliver the kind of services that, that we need to do for our kids who are struggling. So that's kind of the context behind it.
You want to talk a little bit about the relationship with CSSU and CVU?
Yes, thank you. What's, what is tricky here is that this, prior to this year, you would be seeing both a reduction of paraprofessionals and the addition of two professionals, because that's what's happening, really, is that we're looking to reduce paraprofessionals to be able to add professionals. But you won't see the add of professionals at this level. As Jean said, that's part of what we're trying to figure out. It's the SU Board who will technically hire those two positions, but they're being hired for CVU. So there is that, and I'm glad you brought that out. This, essentially, it doesn't look like we're trading, it just looks like you're reducing, but you are, you are, in a sense, trading paras for professional staff.
How many paras do we have to trade in to get one professional?
It's usually, and the numbers that we estimate is a three.
Three for one.
Three for one, yeah. So this, this reduction is to gain two. So this reduction is to gain two.
Sometimes bodies, sometimes numbers of adults are intervening. And so you've got a more professionally trained person, but sometimes just fewer hands. And so, do we know what that's going to look like, or I'm sure you've thought about that piece? I'm not advocating either. I'm just trying to get a picture. Sometimes, really bodies help, and so...
It's a really good question, and one of the things that I think is important to clarify is that we aren't trying to do the same thing with fewer people. We're trying to do something different. And so the something different is, you know, even to the point of there are probably IEPs and other plans that have a certain type of service written in. But part of this analysis that the consultant came in and did, and part of what we know about instruction, is that service delivery model may not be getting us where we need to be, so we're really shifting it. And in this, without getting really into the details, but this is about having more special educator time in the core, so that the, so that a special educator is not spread, is spread among a smaller number of teachers, so that they can provide more direct intensive services, and potentially also serve kids who are not yet identified for special education, so that we can prevent identification. That's part of that multi-tiered piece. So it's a really good question, though, because it's, it's not about, it's about trying to do something different.
Is this going to put more of a load on the classroom teachers?
Actually, I mean, you can speak to this too, but I think that it allows classroom teacher to have more face time and more interaction, more collaboration with their special educator than they get right now.
Right. Right now, the case manager is spread so thin among four different classes, four different grade levels, that really, a lot of the time is spent with the paraeducator, and not nearly as much with the case manager. And this will increase the case manager time with the teachers.
But is that going to give the teacher more responsibility for dealing with the special ed student?
I think they already have that responsibility, right now.
I think so. And I think a lot of it has to do with faculty understanding the types of interventions that are successful and how to implement those, and having that case manager there on a daily basis to help with that process is something that we desire.
Do faculty support this change?
Well, what I'm going to do now is explain the potential impact. And despite the fact that this is a special ed decision, it may impact staff members who are not involved in special ed. Because the way the staff contract is designed, any program assistant, regardless of whether you're special ed or not, can be affected. Because once we make these shifts, bumping rights kick in, and people could have to be reassigned. And although we do not think this is, this will happen, it is possible that some would have to be let go, staff members. We're confident that we will not have to do that, because when we look at the typical turnover in program assistants and in paras, based on, you know, looking at averages for years, we should have enough turnover so that that would not be something we would have to worry about, but it's not a guarantee. And so, to answer your question, I think there are staff members who are nervous about this, understandably, and are concerned.
To that, I do, Susan, I apologize. I got handed this coming in, and it says CSSU School Board, so I thought it was the CSSU agenda, but now it makes sense, so I think Mary Messerow?
Possible, yes. She's ours, yep.
So she just handed this on the way in and asked the board to, asked me to paraphrase it to the board?
Okay, because we'll get there. I think that's six point one point one? Is that association input?
I don't think it's an official, I think it's just a teacher.
She is a teacher, but I think she wants to represent the staff's position on our reductions, yep.
Which would be the next, I mean, six point, yeah.
So I just want to add, although I think...
So my question was more, how do teachers feel about this change in service delivery for special ed?
Well, I think we're still in the process of communicating that. What we've done so far is we've met twice, CSSU and Anna have met with staff twice now, so any staff who might be affected, we've met with them. We've communicated with the core, because they've been accustomed to having program assistants, and now they're going to have case managers. There, we are just beginning the process of communicating with faculty. Right now, we've really focused on communicating with the staff, because those are the ones who are most immediately impacted. And I'd add that this is budget-neutral, although I think Megan intimated that.
So this is something we're going to be acting on in section seven.
So there's not a way to do this without the risk of laying someone off in an unrelated area?
There's no guarantee of being, no, there's no guarantee. Again, Anna's very confident, based on the typical turnover, we are now at the point where if we do not get any other people find other jobs or leave the district, there might be two people who could have their jobs impacted. But typically, we have more than two people turnover between now and the beginning of next school year, in those positions.
And we have to make the decisions about hiring, and we can't make those decisions contingent on making sure that no one's going to get laid off.
Correct.
Right, and our contract specifies that we have to notify any potential staff person who may be impacted. So the number of people that are, that have been notified is higher even than the number of reductions because of the bumping rights. And that's, you know, that is, that's part of the collective bargaining agreement.
So what about implementing this? How many special educators are you wanting to hire this year?
This would be two for next year.
What about hiring one this year, increasing the chances that we don't have to lay someone off?
I think one of the drawbacks with delaying is the, this is hiring season now, as Jeff shared, and there are really some pretty impressive candidates that are in the, in the pool of applicants right now. And that pool of candidates isn't going to be there if, if we wait until we know for sure who's, who's coming back. That's one, that's one factor.
The other factor might be, we've looked at system shifts, and to be able to do this, what Megan described, particularly with putting case managers with core and only with core, that would be impacted as well, the ability to do that.
I mean, I can recognize that it's a really fine line, because you don't want to let anybody go. But if you're trying to implement a model, it's, you don't want to probably do it halfway, because it's not, you're not going to be able to impact the system in the way that you wanted to. So this is a difficult decision.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you right. You said this is case cost neutral?
Yes.
Because we'll be hiring the two professionals, but there are, how many?
Six.
Six. But we will be as many paraprofessionals.
Right, we'll be reducing paras by six to raise...
Six, and it's my understanding that at this point, you've already had four get other jobs elsewhere.
Okay, hiring two full-time professional ed professionals and reducing six. Okay, I have written down three.
And our hiring pool is strong?
Very strong, yeah.
And right now, it's an anticipated opening, because we have approved this.
I've always thought it was kind of interesting that we had students, our students who are, have the biggest challenges are often spending a lot of time with, sure, very well-meaning and maybe well-educated, but they're not professional special educators, so I definitely support any kind of shift.
It just makes so much more sense to have the special educator have the direct contact with the teacher, because right now, there's like, it's like a middle person in a way, makes more work for the special educator to have to train the paraprofessional, but also keep an eye on what's, I mean, it's really a very complex job, that's not the job that a special educator might have been trained to do, which is more expertise and direct, and, you know, instruction and supporting professionals in accommodations.
Do you think it'll change IEPs or delivery systems significantly?
Yeah, I think part of the, we'll now have the ability to write services in the IEP that better, right.
Do we have any other comments? We'll revisit, we'll have another chance to discuss this, I guess, in seven.
I'd like to congratulate Megan on the fact that we did not go, she did not go a million and a half dollars over budget that didn't burn.
I hope that sustains.
I'm going to add that I think it's unfortunate when you think it's a good, well-intended change, but if it impacts a program assistant in the learning center, you know, there's a problem there, so.
Yeah, and I understand the frustration. I was just as surprised and frustrated when I discovered that, and was told that that is the nature of the contract that they negotiated, and so I don't know.
Mr. Coles, the school, I know most schools struggle, haven't keep enough paras in the middle, which would be a nice place to work.
Okay, well, why don't we move on to six point one point one and listen to the letter?
Oh, well, she did not tell me that she was the association. She just handed this to the teachers, so just to be clear, I don't want to represent this in anything else. And really, it's just a note, just, and she said I should paraphrase it, not read it, but basically, as I read it, is her concern is that the six positions are not all specifically special education, that they really support a broader student population, and that those other students will be losing out. Same amount of money serving a small group of kids. That's essentially what her concerns is. Does it, two points occur, one, although it's level funded, the money now serves a smaller population. Two, I find it hard to believe that two people can do the work of six.
And how much does our special needs, you know, the children, the students change from year to year? It's not something, we, how much do we know what's going on? Probably more than other schools, because they're coming into us from the other schools.
You mean in terms, change in terms of how many?
How many and how, what, you know, how specialized the needs are, or how intensive their needs are, you know? And how does that change if you find a few years from now, there's not as much need?
So, our overall percentages, in terms of percent of students eligible for special ed, doesn't, hasn't historically, doesn't mean it won't, but hasn't historically changed a lot in CSSU. We run about eleven percent eligible as, as an average, and CBU falls right, pretty close to that eleven percent. Severity is a little bit of a different question. That is going to vary more from year to year, and, and there are, there are issues and disabilities that we see now that are probably a more frequent and severe level than we saw a number of years ago, and the same might happen in five years. So the other factor about special ed is it's always going to need to change. That's why we have a service planning process that's so connected to what's written into students' IEPs. So even though we're talking about service delivery model, it doesn't stop our system from needing to make individualized decisions, to meet the needs of our, of our kids. But our kind of historical look at who we have and who we have right now and who we project to have coming up, were factors in the analysis that Anna and her team did to be able to say that this is the right model to meet for the foreseeable future, to the extent that we can predict.
Let me, let me see if I understand the, the paraprofessionals bumping issue. We have paraprofessionals who are involved in special ed, and we have paraprofessionals who are not involved in special ed. And so the bumping issue is that in eliminating these six positions, some special ed paraeducators can bump into non-special ed. But that doesn't mean that we're going to lose those paraprofessional positions in non-special ed placements.
That's a really important point to remember, that the program assistants that are currently general education, that's the same number of positions that exist, it's just the people filling those positions.
So, so, so we're not going to lose a program assistant in the learning center?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I thought that was what I was hearing, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it correctly.
We may lose the individual.
Individual, but not the position.
Right, right. Okay, so in this letter, when she was talking about the fact that now there might be some students who will not receive the assistance that they're currently receiving, are these kids who are not in a special ed program, who are being assisted by special education paraprofessionals?
I'm not hundred percent sure what she meant, because I, but the two things that I hear from that is, is hoping that she understands that, as you said, the six positions are maintained, it just might be a different person filling it. And the second part of it, if she is wondering how we're going to fill six people's worth of work with two people, it goes back to that question of, we're not trying to do the same thing, we're trying to do something different.
That would be specific to special ed.
Just to special ed, okay, okay. Ready to move on then? Okay, six point two, CBU survey results. Jean put this together, I hope you all had a chance to look at it, I thought you did a great job, this is a lot of work. And I know for the communications committee, I thought there was some really good information in here for us to use.
If you got a chance to look at just one thing, is that there's two problems for Shelburne and Selby, because Susan had some...
I did a few, and she did, she did a bunch.
And then there's a total of Shelburne, so I thought it probably shouldn't have just passed.
All these pages are different?
The other pages are comments, these are comments.
It's a lot of work, but I do think it's, it is useful to get this snapshot. Did you have any observations you wanted to?
No, not observations, because I think, you know, you know, I've kind of terminated them, I don't want to leave anybody, so I'd love to get it and tell me what you think. But just a couple of comments, the first one, if we see you doing a good job educating our students, that one always is very favorable. What I need to do, and I just didn't get to it, is, that's the question that we've asked consistently every single year for the last five years. And so, the value of that question is, is there, is it going up, down, is there a trend we should worry about, and whatever, but that, I will get that before the next one. We had a question on consolidating school boards, I thought the yeses were more, there was forty-four percent yes, which is higher than it has been in the past, maybe because of all the talk in Montpelier, and maybe people feel that it's going to be some financial benefit, but still, a lot of people need more information. Then we had a couple of questions, then we had a question on the articles, which kind of, this is, Susan, where it is kind of handy to have it by town, because, you know, Williston, haven't seen the articles, because you have a business, but it can accomplish in Williston by some. If you skip down to where it says, how well is CBU preparing our children for life after high school? I have to say, this is, this was one of my big error on the questionnaire, because I had well, adequate, not well on a continuum, and it became, I could not figure it out, all three of us had problems of, well, you were good, you were right, some of them were kind of vague. If there was a checkmark between well and adequate, did that mean they meant kind of well and kind of adequate, or were they just thought it was the line that meant well?
Adequate plus.
Well, dot, 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 adequate, so they couldn't, so that one was more about, in general, you could read into it that people are very confident in our ability to educate our college-ready kids, not as confident in our ability to do as well for our career-ready kids. That's all you can really do, is to say one's a little stronger than the other, so, not a professional survey, but try yourself. It was interesting. That and the fact that I had way too many things people could fill in that I had to type in. I wasn't really surprised the one about the standardized test results, far more people said no, that they don't believe the standardized test results are an indicator of the quality of education the school provides. I was actually pretty stunned by that, being so...
Even listening to the news.
I guess not. Actually, you know what, that's, that's actually a good point.
Break that down.
Ray, do you, I, do you still have your, yours?
I recycle them.
I did mine that, I did mine that way, they weren't very clear when I gave directions on how to do it, so I don't have it for everybody. I have some indication of that. I didn't, I didn't touch that.
Well, I just asked that, because I wonder if a parent of a current junior is more interested... Well, I just asked that because I wonder if a parent of a current junior is more interested in this than, you know, somebody out of school a long time in the workforce, knowing that this doesn't matter. It's, it's your habit to learn. And that's what we keep hearing in the, in the business world, in the work world. You know, we can teach them what we need them to know. We can't teach them the work ethic. So, so I didn't know if that test.
I should, I should check it, because I do have it for an awful lot of them. So, so parents of current students versus parents of people who used to have someone out of school, but that's it.
If I'm reading this right, there's an item down, tell us about yourself. I used to have a family member who was a CBU student, but not now.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Forty percent of the people who responded to that question, that might be not current CBU families.
Right. That'd be really interesting if it just winds up. Yeah, that's easy to check. The other, I guess you can just see the other ones, there was a backup one on how, would you like to receive more information about the Common Core? We just asked about that. It's kind of all across the board, but actually some little good ideas, like everything but, like, doing a YouTube video on something like this, right? I mean, people can click on it. If it's a three-minute video, they're probably more likely to click on it than they would to pick up something and mail them and sit down and read it, so, quite interesting.
The first time. If it was well-produced, they'd come back for the second one.
Those whiteboard things, people would, like, really fast on the work. And then, this was my favorite one, is, well, then the communications ones, which is communications, the, some great ideas for, for that team to go through. My favorite one was the strengths, strengths and weaknesses. What are CBU's strengths and what are their weaknesses? There was a thing that was on only one list. Math is a strength, math is a weakness. And actually, the only thing that I, I mean, I'm really interested in what you guys would, would read from all this. But to me, it really speaks to CBU reaching every child, right? I mean, you know, we don't have something that's a real strength for some kids and also a real weakness for kids. It's just, I just found it fascinating. I'd turn one over, I'd write them all down, and I'd turn it over, and the next one would be, those are the weaknesses.
Where did you get this?
The boxes are just, I'm trying to read, the boxes are just the same categories of, by currently a student. And the only other thing is you guys can remind me if I volunteer to do this again next year. A lot of people, of the choices of, you know, I have a student or I don't have a student. A lot of people said, I don't have a student, but one's starting next year. I think a lot of people really wanted to have the box of children. Which, which might mean that they're more articulate on education access.
More tuned in, yeah.
So anyways, take a look at it, and if there's any other questions or any comments, or whatever we could.
I found it interesting that 51% of respondents to that question noted that the cost of the artificial turf is too high.
High, yeah.
So maybe we didn't do a great job explaining the expense of the alternatives. Maybe there's an opportunity there to go back and, or cut or add, explaining the costs.
Jonathan, that's a great point, and that leads us right into six point three.
Could've said that.
A little behind in the session.
Okay, but we're. Oh, sure, okay. I'm sure not, we're not gonna make up time on this one either, but. So, turf fields. As you all know, we had a failed bond vote last November for a $1.5 million upgrade to our fields. Since that time, we have talked about whether a single field solution might be the right next step, although there continue to be concerns about how complete a solution that would be. We've also talked about whether the project should include bleachers, lights, to what extent natural turf, the natural turf fields would have to be renovated, how the project would be financed, we're still talking about that, and whether we would consider, again, a, another community partnership. So those are all the things that seem to be on the table, based on the conversations I've heard. I think that there is agreement on the idea that if we didn't tie too forward, we would look at a bond vote taking place not in November but in March. I don't think there was any interest on the board to look at another November vote. So, to get us started, Jean sent everybody the, a copy of the latest set of options that are on the table.
Latest being what we reviewed in, no, December. I didn't update any of them.
Right, the last one that, the last set that we've seen, and how financing for each of those options might look. So, that's kind of where we are, and Jean mentioned, this seems to be a really good time to step back and ask ourselves if there's any additional information that we need or maybe we think the community needs to really settle on how we want to move forward with this issue. It seemed like there were some questions that were raised throughout the process that were unanswered, so maybe we want to identify what those are before moving, moving forward. So I guess that's one question I have. How do you feel about that? Are there unresolved questions that you have, additional data that you think we could try to collect? We've got the spring season starting up right now, the fall season coming up next year, that we can, we can take a closer look at to see, maybe provide more documentation of our need, demonstration of our need. So, any thoughts about this?
It's one thing, just hearing stuff from the community is, when were the fields last done? And were they not done correctly? Right, and has anyone pursued that, the fact that they weren't done the way they should have been done?
This question has come up.
I think there's two parts to that. We knew when they were being done, when the $23 million bond failed, we went to 18. So there were accommodations to those dollar amounts. So we knew, I wouldn't say we weren't aware that this was not the best way to go about it, but it was what we could do. We knew it would last, it lasted years, but, but.
How, how long?
And there were some adjustments, we had the contractor come in, I don't remember when, and reevaluate. So, so there's been that done. I can't remember the year. It's been a long time.
It's probably in the Gail report, and I don't have it memorized.
The bond issue is paid. Remember, you said last year?
Yeah.
Ten years.
Ten years.
It's ten or eleven years.
So I think Joan's captured it. It's not a failure as much as it's, everything wears out. Everything, and it's not, it wasn't an ideal solution when it was done, but it was a thing. The best that folks could do, so they went forward with that. It served its purpose. It's worked to a degree, and.
I guess I misunderstood that, because I thought that there has been a drainage problem with those fields, like, all along, but maybe they weren't, it wasn't a problem earlier, and it is now?
Well, I think it's, when you get 100-year rains, it's a problem. And when you have drought, it's not a problem, but in between, it can be very, I, I think that's fair.
I think since it has been accumulated, it's getting worse. I mean, it's gotten worse. The first few years, they were brand new fields, and during the pay, and it's just over the years, the clay, and everything else has gone up. They're just failing.
And are there more people playing, more students using them? Because, and, you know, that's the other thing.
More than 10 years ago?
Or even more than three years ago.
The question Jeff is, is the difference, did the fields fail because they weren't done well? I said they were done to our budget. And we knew there were some things that we were compromising.
Yes, I believe that, at least, my understanding is that there were some cuts in the construction project, and they, a lot of them impacted the field, the building of the fields.
But how long have we had a problem with the fields? How long have we had to camp? Since they were built. So for 10 years, then we've had problems with having to cancel games or practices or relocate them because of the problems with the field?
So that gets to your question initially, which was, were they done correctly at the beginning? Because that was something somebody asked me.
So, I guess, I didn't want to spend a lot of time talking about what we should do. I really wanted to know what additional information we think we need. And then also, you know, how do we want to tackle this problem? Do we want to charge a new committee to, if we identify more information that we need and go about collecting that, have that new committee kind of go back, take that data, take everything we've learned going through the first bond vote, which I think we've learned a lot, and come back with a proposal or maybe a couple of options? Or do we want to hand it back, hand it to the facilities group and have them come up with an option?
So, I keep saying that now, you've got, the facilities group, the facilities committee is saying that two artificial turf fields is the solution. It's the best solution for the school. And then we had, you have other options. One is one artificial turf, and I believe one question I need to have answered is, is it just one artificial turf we're fine? Or one artificial turf and we need to redo one of the grass fields? Or we need to do two of the grass fields? You know, there's some, to me, that's a really important piece of information that we should try to figure out. And the other one is, we just do all the artificial grass. So the facilities committee, I think, and Holly's not here to help me out, but I would say that that's the recommendation, that we still believe the best is two fields. If the board doesn't feel that that's something we can take back to the community, personally, I don't think it is, but if that's not something we take back, it's a compromise to go to one field and something on the grass. It's a bigger compromise to go to all grass. So, that's, so the, and we didn't ever have a, we didn't ever have a field committee. It was the facilities committee and the community.
It would seem to me that, that the way you guys would want to approach it would be an ad hoc committee with a definite endpoint that combines work the facilities committee did and the financial committee did, and throw in some communications issues as well. So that you want to set up this ad hoc group with, with a specific charge of identifying what it is that we, what it is we want to propose in March, if we want to propose something. What are the finances involved? And what are the communications issues that are going to be involved in a, a, a bond article? Because we, certainly the last time around, the communications issue was, was, I think, the downfall.
When we look at these two options, one and two, in less than $200,000 difference in cost, 1.9, 1.7. Am I reading that?
Right, but I think that the thing, I just, I'm trying to make the point on number two, is number two assumes that we also have to upgrade two natural gas fields, which means ripping them all up, we need seeding, there's a lot of controversy whether or not we would need to do that. It could be that one artificial turf field would take enough of the burden off that you wouldn't do any. In which case, it becomes much harder.
But one artificial turf field is not one point, is not just 1 million. You're saying it could be if we're not doing in number two, the other, the other ones.
If we don't have to do the natural ones, or we figure out over time, we do them in a couple of years.
Is that a question, though, that goes back to the facilities committee, to really look at that and, and talk about that?
Certainly a question. I don't know, I don't know anything about fields. I mean, you know, I'm not a.
I agree with Jean that the ideal solution is two artificial turf fields. But it's, we don't, I don't think that's feasible for us to go back and try and do that.
I guess my concern is that.
One thing that I would like for information to answer your question is the equity issue. If we did one artificial turf field, I would like more information about how that would be equitably used by all teams. And I think that would help me feel like we could take that step, and that it would be progress, and it would address the issue and get us closer to a long-term ideal solution.
Is that something that we could ask Kevin to put together, a field use?
And I'm assuming that's with outlights, right?
With outlights?
Yes, we can ask him. I know that it will be a significant challenge with outlights. But yes, we, we can ask him that question and have him try to, Jonathan will make sure I understand. Try to develop a way to do it equitably, or try to give you an, okay.
But what would an equitable solution look like? I don't necessarily think that, I don't think that every single team in the school needs to play on artificial turf if we have reasonable natural grass fields. I, I think soccer is better on natural grass if you have good natural grass, right? So, so I guess.
We've done okay on natural grass as a.
Yeah.
We have done pretty well.
We did have a good, yeah. But my just point is, I don't think that, the, I think maybe that, my, my, way I would ask the question you're asking now, I'm trying to say, put words in your mouth, but what would it, what would it look like? What would the use look like?
Yeah, and I would start with varsity sports only, trying to start with the equitable, being equitable there first.
Would there be title line issues?
I don't think so. You've got a girls', girls' field hockey, football, you've got two boys varsity. Two boys teams, two girls teams, varsity and the ball. I have to think about the spring.
I mean, obviously, you want to play your games.
Yep.
Obviously.
That would be the priority.
You want to be able to play your playoff games, you want to play your championship games. You want to, you, I mean, and work back from there to how many practices that we, does each team get on that field? If there's all they want.
Right.
And can we devise a way to do it equitably? So that the boys and the girls, it's as fair as we can get.
Are you talking for practices?
I'm talking for games. I, I mean, I'd love to practice on all our artificial turf fields. I'm assuming some coaches would.
Well, we.
But that's, that's an ideal world. We're not in that world, and so I'm trying to get us to dealing with.
What we can do is take the existing fall schedule, which is now out, and look at what that would look like. And that's pretty typical from year to year.
Because I would think you'd want them to practice on both natural and artificial, because they'll be playing at away games on both. That would be a way of making it equitable to have people rotate practices.
I think just if you were equitable for games, you would, there would be very limited time for practices, so, yeah.
The, I think these are questions that clearly need to be addressed. Rather than simply pose it to Kevin, I would think that, that you would want to start that ad hoc committee process now, working with Kevin to, to develop the questions and to, to develop the issues and start weighing compromises that are gonna have to be made if we, if we are not going to propose two artificial turf fields, which I think we're not gonna propose.
I guess, you know, going back to the two versus one, one of the concerns I have looking at the options as they currently are written, is that, you know, for both options one and two, I think it sounds like option one is considered the more permanent solution. But in both cases, the bond amount would be the same. So if we're going, sorry, if we're going, you know, if this is the financing plan.
Well, the financing plans are, you know, that's a plan, idea.
So I think this is, this is why I think maybe having a subcommittee in the form that you're describing would be a good thing, to get that going now, to start talking about the actual facility, the financing that goes with it, and then the communications piece, we know it's been, it's an important element.
I, I agree.
So.
I volunteer to do this remotely.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, then, we have a couple of people missing, too.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't we just have on next month's agenda a proposed committee charter?
Okay. Put together a charge and then ask for volunteers to be a part of that. In the meantime, maybe we could continue to think about what additional questions we have or.
What information we could, what information would be good?
That we would like to have. I think the, the other one that, well, Jean, you and I talked about it, was, you know, there was some debate about the Gail Report field use data. People were interpreting that data differently.
Yeah.
And so this might be a good time to, if Kevin could also just keep track of the season and in the fall, how many actual games have to be canceled or practices have to be canceled or, that it would give us at least a real data point between now and when we take this.
On a more serious voluntary note, I'd, I'd be happy to help with putting together a proposed charge.
I would not like David to be putting together a charge for a committee he's not going to be on.
It'll be less than five pages. It'll be less than five pages.
I think the charge might have to come after we think about what the questions are. I don't know, but.
Well, could I ask everybody to send me the questions? I'll take a stab at putting together a charge and then we can revisit this in May.
So because there are some people not here, maybe there's a way to get our minutes out more sooner so that in, you know, how, well, how soon in advance do we usually get them?
Megan can hit send right now.
Well, seriously, if we get them out a little sooner with exactly what that is, then more likely that people might get them to you in a reasonable period of time if you're not doing it the night before.
So it's Holly and Marilyn who are.
Maybe if we just add on to the email that you sent out asking for questions, just send it out again saying, we're still seeking these and we're trying to.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you. Okay.
And Megan can hit send when she's ready.
I have to re-read to make sure that's all understandable.
Okay, then, anything else on that or can we move forward to 6.4, the CDU calendar?
Mm-hmm. How do they find it there?
So this looks a little different than.
It is different than last year, correct? Okay, so as I alluded to last time, we have taken a different approach to the professional development time. And so what we are proposing tonight is to go from 11 half-days in the current schedule to only five. Two of those are to accommodate Rick Wormley because those are the days he could come. And the remainders would be full day in services. And one would be added in August before we start classes and one added in June. So there would be minimal disruption to the flow of the school year. And 177 student days now instead of 180, but again, by trading out all of those half-days, it is going to be very, very similar in terms of the amount of time that students are in the classroom. Still ends up with 189 actually days for faculty because there are three PRT days added to this.
I'm sorry, three what?
Professional resource time. It's part of the collective bargaining agreement.
Which means what?
It means teachers have three days they are supposed to use for improving their craft.
Okay.
Let's, let's leave it at that.
So 177 student days, five half-days.
Mm-hmm.
So 177 minus two and a half, 174 and a half real days. I do this every year.
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
Let's try and get to 175 instead of 110.
And what did it, what was it when we had 111 half-days?
174 and a half.
Okay. Yes, I was trying to make a, a fair swap here. I didn't realize I was trying to net something. But that's good information to have now. So anyway, yes, that's the proposal. I'm imagining, Jean, you might have a question as to why?
I do. You know, it took this board a long time to get going, to get over the full day going to every other week and have a half-day debate. You know, we spent a lot of time, I've explained it in 100 emails to parents when I was board chair, that best practices, say, if you really want to get professional development done, you embed it and you do it constantly. And if you, and I know from my own work experience, if you want a committee to get anything done, you meet regularly. I really think that this is taking a huge step back and I'm just wondering what the thinking is, why we're doing it.
No, it's fair. Let me first. Let me first. Well, we explain the process we followed in coming up with this proposal. There, for the last few years, has been significant grumbling from faculty members about the disruption to the day of having so many half-days, feeling as though those half-days are not significant learning opportunities for students. And then coming from a very, or a reduced schedule into the afternoon and then being asked to focus for two hours on this particular professional development topic is challenging. And so when we asked for them for feedback on other ideas, the prevailing theme by a long shot was that this summer, when they had workshops where there were full days and it was a real focus on the learning in the morning and then the afternoons being to actually go and do the work and work with the professionals within their departments and or within their professional learning communities, they found that to be effective. Here's my take on it. My take is, oh, I'm sorry, let me finish the process. Then it went to program council. Program council agreed and echoed those sentiments. And then, now rather, I will give you my take on it. There are schools, Burlington, for instance, every Wednesday has a late start.
South Burlington, every other.
Every other, South Brooklyn, Rutland has a late start every Wednesday. School I went to, League of Innovative Schools Rhode Island, has an early release every Wednesday. So when you can make the professional development that regular, there is a lot of research to show that Jean is correct.
See?
However. It wasn't a period.
That was a semi-colon, yes. However, comma. The way I look at it, the way I've come to terms with this is that right now, we have significant new learning taking place. And new, when new learning's taking place and when we are building something and all our professional development right now is dedicated to standards work, the model of really concentrating on that in full days and then having the support throughout the year from the instructional coaches and within departments of people working with each other, does work well when it's a full-day model. Went, once something's built, and it's not about new learning and building it, now it's about sustaining something. Now the model of more frequent, on a regular basis, so that it isn't about every time we get together, we've got this significant new learning and then boom, get back into your classroom. It's more about it's built, now we've got to sustain it continually. So I hope that we get our people to a place where I'm coming back to you and saying, now we're ready for a more regular interval and maybe looking at something like the other schools that we just described. And also, the way we've done the half-days, you know, there might be two in one month and we might go two full months without it again, and it does just feel much more disruptive.
I thought it was kind of like November through March. Like everything, like my kids are in school.
Yeah, and it has changed based on the schedule. And, and finding the places for those 11 half-days is incredibly challenging.
So when they had a half-day, how many actual hours are the teachers getting that professional development?
Two.
Two. So when they have a full day, how many hours? It's not four, I bet it's more than that.
Six.
Yeah, eight to three, seven.
Right, so they're actually going to be doing more hours of development. That's the other thing.
Yeah, I haven't done the math in terms of the exchange from 11 for five. And the reason there's still five is there's two professional developments for Wormley and then we still have graduate challenge reading days, which we're in, living in right now, and a MAPS 10 afternoon. I realize I just talked out of both sides of my mouth on that one. Totally get it.
Susan, our recommendation is when parents start complaining, you have to write the emails, waffle.
Say it's developmentally appropriate, given where the district or where the school is at right now. Because that's what you're saying.
I've come forward, if that's the reason, if that's the reason is that the learning is different now than when we were doing it at the time.
Do you have dancing shoes on?
A long time to come to terms with this, but that's where I am.
Okay, so I guess we'll see this next month as an action item. All right, moving on to 6.5 retreat topics. So our board retreat is on Friday, May 30th, and it is going to be at the Sunset Ballroom Comfort Suites.
Sun, our usual.
Our usual, 8:00 AM. It will end at noon, noon, 1:00.
8:30.
Um, May 30th. But for CDU, it's just a half-day. Although you're all, as you know, welcome to stay for the CSSU retreat, which will take place in the afternoon. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and, and invite you to share any topics that you would like to see addressed at the retreat. As you know, this is a time when Jeff shares his kind of state-of-the-school presentation and for us to establish our work plan for the coming year. So a couple of ideas that I already threw out were to have Jeff address plans for administrative restructuring and future plans for academic coaches.
I think they're excellent.
Yeah. Any other ideas?
Susan, say again the times.
8:00 AM.
Eight to four.
It's under 9.0. You've got your agenda.
Oh, thank you.
Susan, I guess my, I think they're both good ideas, but to keep us out of micromanaging, you know, I would be really interested in, just chuckling over one of the comments and the comments that I wrote up was some, and the question of, did you understand CDU evolve? One of the comments was, new principle, move on. I think I would be really interested in hearing, is it sort of your take or how, Jeff's take, how, how administration's reframing it if we are making changes? I think we're making subtle changes. I don't think the vision's different, but maybe something along the way of that. And the question of, Susan, your question on the house, you know, how the houses are going to be restructured or not, I think, how does that move us closer, you know, how does that all fit? So in the context of this is our vision for the school, things are changing or not changing, how does this all fit into the, to the vision? So is there a restatement or we, you know, the CDU 2015, now it's CDU evolve, is it now CDU's a pronoun? Or we've kind of, you know, we've moved so far down the path that it's no longer an initiative we need to have a special name for. You know, maybe we've gotten that far.
CDU we've made it.
CDU we've made it. CDU will never make it out. That was more. So I thought that was.
Yeah, thank you. And that puts it in, I think, a better context.
I was thinking that it might be helpful to revisit the issue of declining enrollments, FTEs, budget, problems with current staffing. I, I, I just think that we're kind of facing that a little bit this year and will continue to face that for a few more years, but maybe we won't.
Sheldon Community School has gone up and I know the houses.
Heinsberg has gone up.
The houses they're building in Heinsberg looks like.
They've built hundreds.
And then your children just.
I heard about that.
I don't know what's, I don't know where the board are at.
Just keeping that on the radar screen.
I think we should, even if it's a plan B or to be cognizant that this could still impact our budgets and we could be facing difficult decisions and be thinking about.
Particularly if the tax things that they're contemplating, they've gotten past the house, right? They send it, adopt them, then the, sort of the soft cap on, probably the soft cap on per pupil spending would be devastating to us if they're still going down. So by then we'll have a better idea for, they will adjourn, we will know, we will know what we are facing.
Right.
Well, it kind of fits with the restructuring that you're talking about.
Okay, I'd like to revisit the co-curricular committee.
Co-curricular, you'll see it in May.
Okay.
A report out?
A report out, yeah. We may want to add it to the retreat topic. At the report. Okay.
Two-day retreat, maybe?
All right, then, moving on to section seven, action matters. 7.1, point one, I guess I need a motion for a leave of absence request for visual arts teacher. And discussion, do we have a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Against? Okay, 7.1, point two.
Move.
Second.
A discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Could that passes? Seven, uh, no, all right, moving on to 8.0, consent agenda. Could I have a motion to?
Do we do the other two?
You don't have those and you know.
Might be a revised version.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I get to say move this time?
Okay, we have a motion for a partial resignation request.
Is this the one? Is this the one that was addressed to Ms. Evans?
I thought that, I noticed that. Did you notice, Jean? Because you're always very careful about those things.
It was one of them.
It's a two-way for me to say nay.
Okay, all those in favor? Against? So that passes, then we need, so I've already done this one.
We didn't vote.
We've got to turn it forth.
We didn't vote on that.
We discussed it.
Okay, could I have a motion to, for a reduction in force for paraeducators?
So moved.
Second? Do we have any more discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
Okay, so that passes and we're done with section seven. Now moving on to section eight, could I have a motion to pass a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And there's no discussion here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? So the consent agenda is passed and confirming next meeting dates, CDU board meeting, the next one is May 14th, 7:00 PM, annual treat, May 30th, and our business meeting on June 27th.
We saw it in the, you said, and that's been a part of the faculty awards, the last faculty meeting.
Yes.
I didn't open it. What?
Yep, Tuesday of exam week, I don't know the date.
Five days, 13th, CDU 12, 11, 10.
Yeah.
June 10th.
June 10th, I believe, 1:00 PM or 1:00. I think it's 1:00 PM.
And that's really a good, a good event to be, to be timed.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
1:00.
So it helps spread the word, I guess it's okay to send this article to folks.
I'll send it out to everybody and get it on that Facebook page.
You might have to extend graduation if we get a great response. It'd be wonderful.
We've had jokes about the, the age of ours for a long time.
We're going to tell them it starts at noon.
It's an overflow. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.